We would invite all of the CAREs to join us in standing with recitation of the Lord's Prayer. All right, moment of silence. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thy is kingdom, and power, and glory forever. Amen. It's now seven o'clock. Shelby City Council is called to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You see me, please? Roll call, please, Mr. Crum.
Mr. Robb.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Gates.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Here.
I'm about to entertain a motion to dispense of the reading of the Journal from May 3, 2021.
To whom?
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin to dispense of the reading of the Journal from May 3, 2021, discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates.
Yeah.
Mr. Martin.
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
That motion passes. And now comes the time for public comment. And you'll send your agenda. I have invited this evening Ms. Janice Warner. She is the president and CEO of Community Action Commission of Erie, Huron, and Richmond County. Last week at a board meeting, we were discussing the fact that sometimes the CAC is the best kept secret in their community. And we don't want to be that way. I want to bring to the attention of the citizens of Richmond County, northern Richmond County, and Shelby in particular, all the good works that the CAC is doing. And I couldn't think of a better person to do that than Ms. Warner. The privilege of serving that board now since 2015. And she is a friend of mine, a friend of this community, and a wonderful servant for the citizens of Richmond County, Erie County, Huron County. So Ms. Warner, if you will come and maybe kind of unfold the mission of CAC and some things that they offer, particularly in these challenging days.
I do want to thank all my board members. Pastor Shag, his career, I do consider him a friend. And he is an awesome board member. And I do have a good board, so I can't say that he's better than the rest of them because they're all good. I have an 18-member board. And I was telling everybody, now they're yes board. But they are a good board and did a lot of things up. And I want to thank you for this opportunity. An opportunity to talk about something that's second best in my life. I always say, out of God, he's number one. Probably maybe third with my family. But Community Action is what most people call is the best kept secret. But we do a lot of work. We do a lot of work. We came about under the economic act of 1964. President Lyndon Baines Johnson declared world poverty. So that's when Community Action was spurred into existence, if you will. Our agency was, came into existence in 1965, a year after the world of poverty. We started out in Erie and Huron County. And there was a grant opportunity applied for a grant. So the Erie County Commissioners and the Huron County Commissioners got together and formed Erie-Huron Community Action Commission. Erie County wasn't large enough by itself. Huron County was not large enough by itself. So that's why they became one. And we've been going ever since. We were designed to eradicate poverty in all the counties within the United States. Right now, there are a thousand community action agencies nationwide. And like I said, our purpose is to coordinate methods of removing the economically disadvantaged population Erie, Huron, and now Richmond County for our agency. Because back in 2010, the state of Ohio came to us and asked us to operate the social service portions of Community Action out in Richmond County. I believe it was ran by CDAT at the time, if you remember that name. So that's what happened. I met the mayor of the Culver of Mansfield.
Don Culver.
Don Culver, and I met Marilyn Johns during that time. As we were getting together, seeing how we can bring that services here to Richmond County. And we had a good meeting with Marilyn Johns. And she wanted to make sure that we were showing a presence in Shelby. So that's why we're in Shelby. I think we're still partnering with someplace out here. Pastor Shag, he helped us get something going also. We do appreciate that. So that's how we became about. I was talking about my board briefly. I govern by an 18-member board. We have five board members from Richmond County. And it's hard to do the other two. It's supposed to be six, six, and six. But Head Start rules and regulations says that we must have a Head Start parent on the board. So it's either Huron County that will have the seven, and Erie County will have six, or vice versa, depending on where that parent's from. And that's how our bylaws read that we don't operate Head Start down in Richmond County. That's from Ohio Department. They operate with Head Start. So one of the things that we do, we like to collaborate with other community organizations to design workable responses to unmet needs. So that's one of the things Community Action does. We like to implement, where possible, a range of programs resulting from assessment and a collaborative process. We advocate for the communities with unmet needs. Every three years, we do a full-blown community needs assessment. So we identify where we should put the money that we receive from the state of Ohio and also the federal government. Where should we put the money to help meet the unmet needs of the residents in Erie, Huron, and Richmond Counties? And then we want to make sure that people are aware of us and also our mission. And our mission statement is to promote self-sufficiency and improve the quality of life of those in need. We are about a $6 million agency until COVID came. So you see CARES money. You receive even, I call them the alphabet soup. You got C-I-F, something, something, something. I call them the alphabet soup of grant, one, two, three, four, five. But since COVID, and we're helping people with rental assistance, mortgage assistance, water bill, trash, internet, car repairs, food, our budget has almost doubled. We have received an additional $5 million to help people with those needs. If you know anyone, and the only thing I didn't bring with me is the guidelines. And I'm gonna give you my business card and also brochure guidelines. Because we are up to 200% of poverty. If you know anyone that's late on their mortgage, or late on their rent, or they need to be in a place, please contact the agency that's 597 Park. Wait, what is it? Park? East Park, West? I don't even know that. The Old Peoples. The Old Peoples building. I was gonna predict that address, I said 597. West, I don't know. Okay, I'm sorry. But that's where we're located, you have my card. But contact us, we have money. Even for car repairs, we have the money. 200% of poverty. Some people with rental, that need rental assistance, and also mortgage assistance, they can get 15 months' pay of their mortgage, so that people have, they will be evicted. We have the money. And if you have read the news, or saw what Governor Dewine did on Tuesday, he's given us another $265 billion for rental assistance, home repairs, mortgage assistance, those things, and then garbage bill, trash bills, water, car repairs, all those things. So if you know anyone, please have them come. What are you here, Pastor Shag? Are we still coming to Shelby?
Well, Mr. Hickman is in contact with Shelby Help Line, I think almost on a daily basis. Now, I don't know if he's here physically. But we do use a Shelby Help Line number as a referral number. And of course, at our utilities office, the ladies down there, they have a firm grasp of what can be done through CAC funds with utilities.
Right. Okay, utilities. But if you know of anyone, especially with the home repair dollars. And I know, I always tell everybody, I just know enough to be dangerous. But I know the landlord's gonna have to sign off. And then they go, give the check to them, and they'll go back. They can pay it up to 15 months. One of the, I don't, I was almost saying, but I can't remember if you have one, any of them out. So that's what we do. We try to meet the unmet needs. We're here to eradicate poverty. We're the voice for the voiceless. We advocate for the poor. We do whatever we can to make sure people become or stay self-sufficient. So if you know anybody, don't let nobody get evicted out of their homes when we got all this money and another $265 billion coming out of poverty. And I just shared with you, we receive over additional $5 million to help this situation. I did get me some information on how this is going here in Mansfield. He says here in Mansfield that they have committed $320,000 for rent and mortgage and utility. And we have $1.4 million for Mansfield. So we still got a billion dollars to go here in Mansfield. Car repairs, they kept nine customers that are total $5,400. They gave out food vouchers of $1,600. And they kept with the utilities customers $32,000 in excess, November 1st. So there's still money out there. We need to expend the money. We don't want it. I can't use it for nothing else but the things I mentioned. I can't pay salaries. I can't get no good bonus. I can't do nothing. It all goes to service and goes to the people. So if you know of anyone, please send it to Icky Kevlin at the old People's Building. Sorry, Kevlin, there it goes. Does anyone have any questions of me? I want to thank you so much for this opportunity, Pastor Shag. And I want to thank you guys for listening to me.
And thank you, Janice, for making the trip. This was on short notice.
Yes.
She's had a busy day, and she's anxious to get on the road and get back home.
Yeah.
About an hour away. But again, and the organization, we're audited every year. The programs are graded on an outcome-based level. So we're trying to make sure that if we're investing money, that there is an outcome, a visible outcome. And so there's a wonderful accountability built into the CAC, which I witnessed that. So again, Janice is one of the best. We thank you so much for coming, and journey, mercy, on your way home.
Okay, thank you so much, gentlemen. Okay, thank you.
Is there any further public comments that we brought before council this evening? If not, we inform them to report from standing in special committees. Finance and personal committee, Matt, Councilman Gates.
Thank you, Mayor. We met last Thursday. Took a somewhat abbreviated look at the financial statement. I'm gonna start on the last page, because this is the best news, I suppose. The income tax collections at the top, you see the income tax collections year-to-date as of April. You see collected $1.6 million so far this year. As you look across to your left, you will see that the cumulative totals for the first third of the year are significantly less than the $1.6 million. Likewise, if we drop down to the bottom, we can see what was taken in in the month of April alone in 2021, a little over $600,000. If you look over in 2017, down in July, you see that $626,000 was taken in. But other than that, and that's the aberration there. I don't know why we have such a large figure in July. Except it's halfway through the year, which has shown the first half, perhaps, for businesses that weren't filing monthly. So, but anyway, that's what income tax looks like. If we take a look, I think it's the second page, where we can see breakdown. We can see individuals, $394,000. Yes, $394,000. Businesses, $212,000 in withholding, a little over $1 million. So you can view comparisons. And again, looking at the three-year average, up individual and withholding, 11%, 12% at 18%. The business withholding is certainly an aberration. From last year, that only was $85,000 for business tax. Not to put words in his mouth, but I think that the finance director was just as equally astounded by that. And I don't recall he had an explanation. If he has an explanation now, he's looking to share it with us. But it's just beyond explanation in many ways.
Yeah, real quick, the, yeah, I'm very impressed and happy with how things are. Not only for us, but also for our citizens. Because obviously, if the income tax is up, that means that the wages and the income for businesses and such is up. You know, the, really both individual and business returns. Recall, last year, you know, kind of the world stopped in late March. And so we didn't collect a lot of our late March, early April returns. And so, you know, that might have something to do with it. As far as the reason for our business returns especially being a big way up, you know, we're, in this case, we've kind of had a blessing in that many of our businesses here in town are not really based on like the tourism world. You know, a lot of our manufacturing and really many of our businesses were deemed essential. And so they kept operating. And then, you know, there were, while the payroll protection program, that's not taxable for us, but many other grants and such that came from various entities did get included in their taxable income. So that might have something to say for it as to why those numbers are up for this year. And just on another side note, I do look forward to talking to you guys about it next month because we sure were busy today on our tax deadline.
Thank you, Mr. Crum.
Looking at the, again, the front page, some points to highlight. You can see the general fund, the cash as of the end of April was, my bifocals, non-bifocals. I think that's a 1.5, it was a 1.6. And I think it's 1.5, yes. Which you can see is up, we had $1.3 million beginning of the year, so we're up. And even looking at the, if we take away the encumbrances, we are, even that encumbered figure is greater than the fund balance in cash at the beginning of the year. We drop down to Park, First Health in Park, healthy balance is there. The reason for that is first half real estate tax collections were received in April. And so those are added in there. So that puts both those funds into a good, healthy balance. Dropping down to capital improvement, line 300, $155,000 there. Of course, we will be spending that on various projects. We go down to line 400 and the sewer fund. And Mr. Martin and I are gonna tag team Sewer Fund. I'll just touch on the figures here, and even go into greater detail. The sewer fund is in precarious shape right now. I think that's a safe word without hanging crate. $160,000, but if we take off the encumbrances, $66,000, that leaves only $94,000 free and clear in the sewer fund. Not a good situation, we'll talk more about that in a few minutes. Water, $302,000. Again, a large amount encumbered there. $160,000, but still leaving $143,000. So even with that large encumbrance, it's still healthy in a situation like sewer fund. Electric fund, $5.9 million. $1.6 encumbered, leaving free and clear, $4,300,000. That's less than what we had at the beginning of the year, the $5.8 million. But again, that's, of course, that's comparing two different things. But that first figure is unencumbered. So we had 5.8, we had $5.9 million as of the end of April. Look down at the hospitalization fund. It's in good situation right now, or is that the end of April? $676,000. We're on target for possibly having, being able to go a month without making transfers from the various funds into the hospitalization fund. That's something we'll look at. We had said we'd look at it after the first half of the year. You know, that would be good. That would be a savings to all those funds that have employees that receive healthcare benefits. So that's a way that we can have some savings across the board. Knowing, of course, that, you know, God forbid, and I say that reverently, you know, things can happen. People can get ill, families can get ill, and that fund can go the other way very quickly. But as of now, it's looking good that we can go a month. You know, if we were really, you know, if it was really great, you know, and it might get better for the, we might be able to go two months. They're not happy, they don't want to do a partial month. It's all or nothing for a month. So, but who knows? We get toward the end of the year, maybe we can twist their arms, you know, who knows? So, all right. The next page, Jim, we have the income tax at the beginning. I'm not gonna go over the others. My colleagues, Mary, can look at, can do those comparisons. They know greater than unless they do as well as I do. The next page, of course, where we look at utilities. And again, during the comparisons of revenues and expenditures in various years. The, down the bottom, of course, this is where we see the transfers from income tax to the various funds. You know, we should be so lucky, although I don't believe in luck. Things happen for definitive reasons. But we should be so fortunate, I'll say that. Income tax revenues were greater than the lesser amount that the finance director had predicted for the year. I believe that was 7%? So, you know, we may have to do a revision when we transfer more monies into these various funds. The cash investment reconciliation statement. I asked the deputy finance director how our interest was doing, and I think she replied, well, it isn't. So, but you can see, my friends, that as of the end of April, we had in the city treasury The next page is the little, before the sewerage fund. And again, of course, I talked about the income tax collection. We talked about a couple other things. This is a follow-up, the possibility of bidding out insurance this fall. The finance director is looking at retaining the services of consultant to look at the various insurances. Commercial insurance is, you know, much more complicated than, you know, sitting at home and calling the general for your insurance needs. It's hugely complicated. And involving fire catch and proper, the errors of omissions that covers people. The big insurance that we are always concerned about is police liability. That's a very particular insurance. So the finance director's gonna reach out to a consultant and go from there. So, and he said he's gonna contact someone between now and this meeting here. So hopefully, he's got a little something to report.
Oh, I really don't. I got a little wrapped up with the tax deadline. But I do have the name of a person that one of our neighboring cities has recently used. And so I will start with them, and then do research on other names and that all. And so I'll have something for your next meeting.
Mayor, then you, personnel side, you had mentioned that the, it's likely we're hiring a police patrolman in the next couple of weeks, plus or minus. So that's in the works. Fire department is interviewing four candidates. And the city's hired a new crew chief for the line department. So those were the personnel matters that you brought to the committee. The big matter that we dealt with at finance and personnel was the American Rescue Plan. And where we had looked at the 70, 60-some pages, Roman Dugle, two eligible uses. And we discussed that at great length. We, I say we, is Mr. Martin myself, Mayor, you, the finance director, the deputy finance director, learning the various things that we can do. There's one subject that, or one matter that is disappointing to learn, and that has to do with revenue loss. Very simply, the rule allows people, allows business, excuse me, governments, I'll get it right, to compare their 2020 income to their 2019 income, and then to make up the difference. Well, we were, you know, happy to hear that. It's revenue loss. Recipients may use payments from the fiscal recovery funds for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue experienced due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. Sounds great. Except we turned that a couple pages later, and on page 55, it says, "The definition of general revenue would exclude revenue generated by utilities and insurance trusts." Well, the bubble that was rising regarding water and sewer funds, particularly the sewer fund, I'm sorry to say, got burst rather quickly. And, you know, a disappointment to us. But again, that statement is about as clear as it could possibly be. So there's no wiggle room there. There are investments in infrastructure that are allowable uses. Water and sewer, in particular. Says the final rule provides these governments with wide latitude to identify investments in water and sewer infrastructure that are of the highest priority for their own communities. And they talk about improvements to water treatment plants. And I'm thinking, been there, done that. Then they talked about improvements to wastewater treatment plants. And it's like, been there, done that. So, you know, and to our credit, that here in the city of Shelby, we were proactive in taking care of both of those plants. But one thing that they talked about is doing projects that have a positive impact on their health and well-being as soon as possible. And on page 67, very clearly, recipients may use fiscal recovery funds to invest in a broad range of projects that improve drinking water. a broad range of projects that improve drinking water infrastructure, such as building or upgrading facilities and transmission distribution and storage systems, including replacement of lead service lines, given the lifelong impacts of lead exposure for children and the widespread nature of lead service lines, treasury encourages recipients to consider projects to replace lead service lines. Mayor, that, you know, that was almost like, uh, you know, the lights flashing, uh, very clearly, if that's something that, uh, we choose to do, I, I can't imagine there'd be any question of that based on this language, it is, is, is as clear as it may. Uh, the other infrastructure that is, uh, very, very much talked about here in the interim rule, I'm starting with page sixty-nine, broadband infrastructure, uh, the COVID-nineteen public health emergency has underscored the importance of universally available, high-speed, reliable, and affordable broadband coverage, as millions of Americans rely on the internet to participate in among crucial activities, remote school, healthcare work, so again, uh, universally available, high-speed, reliable, and affordable broadband, so, uh, again, very clear, uh, and they talk about in, in, uh, in fair detail here about speeds, uh, about the, the speed to, uh, to download and to upload, I was, uh, impressed about, uh, you know, how much detail was there, uh, talking about, uh, the ability to, uh, page seventy-two, they talk about a household with two telecommuters and two or three remote learners today are estimated, the, the one, one hundred, uh, megabytes download to work simultaneously, so, you know, that's, you know, they're talking about five people online, you know, doing significant work, uh, so again, a bunch of information there about, uh, about broadband, so, uh, the next part that we did get copies of, uh, Roman numeral three, is, talks about restrictions on use, so that's the, the next homework assignment I have for myself, and, uh, you know, I'll have a clearer understanding of what's going on, so, uh, Mayor, I was going to say in a nutshell, but that wouldn't be true, uh, Mayor, that's my report, uh, obviously, Mr. Martin has anything to add, and I think on a particular topic, he might have something to add, so, uh, something that's near and dear to his heart.
Mr. Martin.
Uh, Councilman Gates is very true, you know, when it comes to lead service lines, uh, that was very clear, uh, you could almost tell the direction they were trying to go with all the verbiage, uh, and that was definitely clear usage, uh, broadband, broadband was, uh, I'll, I'll classify it as fairly clear, um, I was impressed with the amount of educational work they put into the rule itself about the importance of broadband, um, and actually, uh, I was very surprised to see the hundred megabit figure, um, as prominent, mainly because they've been so focused at the federal level at the twenty-five, uh, megabit level, um, but they basically said that's not adequate, when we've done the studies and the average household use, it needs over a hundred megabits, and so you need to build up the infrastructure, if you're going to use the lines for this, it needs to be prioritized at speeds higher than a hundred megabits per second download, uh, they even talked about the importance of synchronous, a hundred megabits down and a hundred megabytes up, um, and that was very interesting, because that's, uh, kind of a, uh, a cultural sea change, I'll say, for Washington, um, and kind of showed that there are people in the policy shop there who are, uh, a little more tuned to actual, the actualities of everyday use, which is, which was good, which was, so, uh, but, uh, one thing that we did talk about, uh, as a committee, um, was that it seems to be the best use of the funds would be one or two large projects, uh, especially with all the minutia and the, the different things, versus, uh, trying to do fifty smaller projects, I, I don't want to put words in Councilman Gates' mouth, he kind of summed it up as, fifty thousand dollar project, we can just do with our general fund, we don't have to do with this, so why don't we look at some big projects, um, that, uh, would benefit the community, um, that we can use it versus, you know, us just signing off on a fifty thousand dollar project, and we call that an average Monday here, uh, versus, uh, being able to actually put a lot of teeth into some of the big projects, um, and I think the general consensus among the committee was, you know, looking at lead service lines, looking at broadband internet, uh, that, I, I think that's beneficial, I know that from, kind of leading into the utilities and streets, but Mr. Insman is going to give us a list of, of the lead service lines, and, uh, we're going to get a list there too, um, but, uh, kind of my summation, I think, of that conversation, uh, again, I don't speak for Councilman Gates, but it was an agreement of him, uh, when he phrased it that way, that, that's, just think the better use of the funds is one or two very big projects, um, versus just a whole bunch of scattered smaller projects.
Are there any more comments or questions for Mr. Gates regarding his reports? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I'm moved that the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statement, both dated, uh, as of the end of, uh, April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city's website.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin, that the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statement, both dated, uh, April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city website. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates? Yay. Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Motion passes, thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Mr. Gates.
Mayor McGlocklin.
Forward then to the Utilities and Streets Committee, Councilman Martin.
Thank you, Mayor, to the Streets Committee, met, uh, right after the Finance Committee, per usual, on the thirteenth of, uh, May, uh, so I'm going to try to go through this as, uh, painlessly as possible. Uh, paving recap, uh, the coasting construction was a successful bidder for the twen, of the twenty-twenty-one street paving project, uh, the engineer's estimate, um, was around four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, the coasting bid came in at around a hundred five, four, did I say a hundred? Four hundred and sixty, uh, sixty-eight thousand, uh, the coasting bid came, uh, at around four hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-six, I'm thirty-four cents, for those who are particular, uh, the streets to be paved this year, um, Simeon Avenue, Carlton, Sherman, Park, Mac, uh, from Park to Tucker, and then Mac, again, from Tucker to Sherman, and then High School Avenue, uh, as the alternate in the bid, uh, the project's start date is tentatively scheduled for early August, project completion date by contract is beginning of October, so, very exciting stuff there, additional paving that has been scheduled this year, uh, Fish Avenue between Sherman and Carlton, uh, repairs needed to be made, uh, before the street is paved, um, they're going to square the road eighteen feet, and the subgrade repair, uh, build the base with, uh, stone, um, alleys, the alley between Broadway and Second, uh, and then the alley between Park and Mac, uh, are currently receiving quotes for those areas, anticipating the quotes to be under fifty thousand, upon receiving the review of quotes, legislation will be presented to council for authorization to pay the areas, and if funds allow, additional areas will be sought to pay, so, very great, and then, of course, in everybody's slide deck, you get all these wonderful area photos. Um, all right, East Main Sewer Project, this project is replacing the age sanctuary sewer between Main, Sewer Main, between Mohican and, uh, High School Avenue, the project is tentatively scheduled to start the week of May thirtieth first, project will take approximately two weeks to complete, traffic will be due toward during the construction phase, uh, signs will be posted, and local traffic will be open to downtown businesses, utilities' office will remain open, but the drive-through will be closed to traffic, the replacement of the Sewer Main was planned to be ahead of the downtown, uh, enhancement project, um, and that project cost is around eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two, the city portion, uh, coming in at twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars, and then OPWC is picking up the rest at around sixty-three thousand dollars. All right, light plank equipment demolition, twenty-twenty-one equipment demolition project, um, we are gathering demolition quotes to remove some retired equipment from the light plank, uh, to include the three megawatt Cooper, uh, diesel generator, turbine generator number two, turbine generator number four, uh, and, uh, projected cross, projected cost, might be able to speak today, to remove listed equipment is around fifty thousand, uh, note, superintendent is having a hard time receiving quotes for the demo work, only one company has provided a quote for the project so far, reasons for others not providing a quote, mobilization is too costly, too many man-hours, uh, it's very labor-intensive, not interested in small projects, and if interested, maybe next year, currently too busy, uh, another community is having the same issue, so, uh, interested party is available late summer, early fall, and, uh, they need a sponsor to authorize that, and I agreed to do that. All right, electric, traffic signals, controllers, traffic controller replacement project, uh, the new, uh, traffic control devices are being planned for the West Side Square and the East Side Square, West Side Square, Main Street and Gamble intersection, and the East Side Square, Main Street and Mansfield Broadway intersection, the current controllers are twenty-plus years old, the West Side controller has been damaged and repaired several times, the East Side controller developed an electrical short several months ago, new controllers would be of like kind as the traffic controllers working the intersections on Mansfield, uh, Main, High School Avenue, Gamble, Smiling, um, specific to one manufacturer, trying to keep all the controllers the same, uh, ground-mounted, easier program, and allow for camera operation to help control traffic better, there are better efficiencies for the motorists, uh, and with, uh, new underground cables, controllers are being designed and planned into the downtown enhancement project, controllers are to be installed prior to or during the enhancement work, the cost is, uh, twenty-four thousand, around twenty-four thousand for the controllers, installation at eleven, an estimation installation of, sorry, eleven thousand for East We, East Side, thirteen-five for the West Side, um, and so, the estimated grand total cost for the new controllers, um, is, uh, forty-eight thousand, five hundred, and so, preparing legislation to purchase and install those new controllers, and traffic signal poles, so the traffic signal poles on Main Street are scheduled to be painted, contractor is tentatively scheduled to start painting the cantilever for traffic signal, signal poles on Main Street the week of July twelfth, uh, the locations, uh, the, uh, pretty much the same intersections, we just talked about, painting is scheduled between the hours, ten p.m. and four a.m., they're considering shutting off the traffic signals when the poles are being painted, the intersection would then become a forward stop, temporary stop signs would be utilized posted, poles are being painted prior to the downtown enhancement project, and so they're staying ahead of the project, and if I could just take a quick moment to, uh, really thank, uh, Mr. Insman for his proactive thinking along the lines of doing this project, because the last thing you want to do is, we do this wonderful project, and then all of a sudden we have to do all this work, we're tearing up roads, all this stuff, so they've done a very good job, whether it's the lead service lines going through the area, uh, the traffic signals, everything, um, we're, we're basically going to be doing a complete redo of that corridor, so, I really thank for that. All right, wastewater treatment plant digesters, uh, are operating more efficiently, they're producing less sludge, so they're moving sludge twice per year, three times per year, that cost savings, uh, will mean that there's less collection of quarterly, uh, PCA, reducing, uh, more methane gas for the boiler operation, uh, boilers, uh, utilize methane gas to heat the sludge, and methane gas is quote-unquote free, a fuel source, unfortunately, an operational change to the treatment process is pumping waste to the digesters for a longer period of time at a cooler temperature, which is making it harder for the methane gas boiler to heat the sludge to the operating temperature, secondary boiler is being used more often to help increase the sludge temperature, secondary boiler uses diesel fuel, a purchased fuel, uh, diesel fuel costs are not recovered currently in the quarterly, uh, PCA, uh, with the abundance of the free methane gas, the operators are researching the comps to change the burner and the diesel boiler to a dual-fuel burner, uh, a current heat exchange system for the digester operation is using increased amount of diesel fuel, uh, and so, it brings to, uh, around forty-eight hundred, uh, more than we had appropriated, uh, so we're going to have to look at that. All right, without further ado, sewer fund balance, in short, it sticks, oh, I'm sorry, couldn't resist, all right, so sewer fund balance continues to decrease, found, fund balance at the beginning of the year was two hundred and twelve thousand, fund balance at the end of March was a hundred and seventy-three, fund balance at the end of April was a hundred and sixty, and of course, with encumbrances, uh, it was below a hundred thousand. Revenues, the collections are being affected by, uh, lack of water sales, uh, loss of leachate revenues, and lower second quarter production cost adjustment, uh, that decreased to five point seven for the months of April, May, and June, uh, and that PCA adjustment is based on expenses, but because the plants are operating more efficiency, efficiently, and producing less sludge, using less electric, that PCA was automatically adjusted down. There are also large expenditures, uh, there was a large encumbrance, uh, in March, the administrative fees, sludge pressing expense, um, of about twenty-one thousand dollars as well, um, so there are measures that we are considering to increase the fund balance, um, albeit, uh, hopefully temporary, because, uh, we'll start to, uh, September and October, uh, we will start to, uh, see an increase in the, I believe it's the sludge removal, not sludge removal, the...
You're talking about revenues?
Yeah, the revenue.
We're taking a product from, um, the, uh, industrial customer.
Thank you, yes, so, and that's planned on common lines September, October, uh, so we're looking at, uh, offsetting those loss between those, um, so, uh, number one here was to apply, uh, ARC funds, but we discussed that, so that's out, but number two is to borrow money from the general fund, um, and, uh, that was, uh, received, we'll say cruelly, by the committee, uh, number three, uh, increase sewer base rates, uh, and then, um, number four, uh, decrease expenses, uh, they, they are trending down, uh, but we don't think it's going to be enough to make us to September, October, um, so, we, we discussed it, uh, if we did do the borrowing, we'd borrow in our paper, which is fine, we'd be basically paying interest on it, and it could very well come to September, October, where there's a need to increase sewer rates, nobody wants to increase rates, that's, uh, probably the least, uh, politically expedient option, uh, but then, in this case, it does look like it's going to be the, the best option, uh, so we are looking at, uh, increasing the sewer base rates, uh, and, uh, looking at doing a, uh, temporary, um, uh, Councilman Gates was in the meeting, and he talked about, instead of doing the, uh, base rates, instituting a temporary fee to stopgap, uh, between now and, uh, the new industrial sewer account coming in line, um, and so, we're exploring, uh, both of those options as possibilities, so, uh, more stuff to be coming down, but, um, what's very clear is that doing nothing is not an option, that's what we can, uh, explore a lot of those options, um, that's pretty much, that's pretty much, uh, it on my end, I don't know if anybody has any questions about the sewer fund balance, uh, any opinions on that, but, uh, one thing that we did make clear is that we don't want to be in a situation where we just try to increase rates just a teeny bit, and then all of a sudden we get to October, and we're going to have to increase rates again, uh, we'd much rather be in a situation where we increase the rates or increase the fee, even if we write in the legislation that we are going to, uh, revisit it in, uh, December or January, to, again, then decrease them, uh, to level, uh, but we definitely don't want to be in a situation where we're just incrementally increasing continually, uh, because, uh, you know, we're afraid of... because, you know, we're afraid of increasing things. And then all of a sudden we're in a situation where we have to increase it more and have more votes in the topic, so. But Mayor, that's my report. Are you any questions?
Thank you, Councilman Gates. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Gates in regard, I'm sorry, Mr. Martin in regard to your report? Thank you. Move forward to the Safety Committee. Councilman Roberts.
Sir, Safety Committee on May fifth. She told us we reported that Paula had retired because she was last shift in our department place. So we thank him for his years of service. Volunteer firefighter Lance Crans has moved out of the area, so he will no longer be a volunteer firefighter for us. But we do have one new volunteer, and the monitor will join the volunteer force, so kind of washed there. Health Department, been looking at, watching seven nuisances, and three or four will probably be sent to the law director, the law department for further action. We did have a long discussion about the version of the local health departments. At that time, we didn't have a whole lot of new, didn't know exactly what could happen, you know, their spirit was all kind of up in the air. So, unfortunately, we'll get some of that. In police news, Children Police Department has met several standards with the Ohio Collaborative Community Policing Board. I have a copy of, so that report, if anyone would like to look at it. Three candidates at that time being tested to replace one officer vacancy. Chief Combs would like to move the department to the March radio system. As most departments in the county, and all fire departments in the county are already going with the March system. I think there were three, or we were one of them. Ironically, House Bill two-seventy-eight would mandate that all police departments in the state enter the March system within five years. So all of that, it could be funding for the system, which is quite expensive. We have our fire department, that, you know, we already use a fire department, and it's not, it's not a cheap system, but it's a good system. So we communicate very well, and that's one of the problems with the police department. We cannot communicate with county fire departments because we're not with that, we're not with the system, so. Health Department has inspected jail, and everything went well, everything passed, so. And the state will perform their jail inspection on June second. Last year, we did a self-inspection, I guess it was called due to COVID, that were coming around, or kind of, you know, keep everybody safe, so we did have it in our own self-inspection, but this year there will be a full jail inspection as part of the state. And lastly, lastly, but very importantly, Captain Raff has been requested to sit on the Ohio Jail Advisory Board. That board has input on make policy, but they have input on jail policy. Chief Combs says it's a pretty big deal, and Councilman Gates, we're in a, it's a very big deal, you know. Anytime we can get somebody from our city to sit on the state board that has, you know, input on policies, you know, that's, that's a really big deal. So we really thank Captain Raff, Captain Raff does a really good job with our jail, and so, you know, he's, so we're going to do that. And that is my report.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Roberts. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Roberts in regard to his report? Now we'll move forward to reports of city officials. A report of the mayor, and we continue on the line of the police department. On today's, today's paper, front page, there was a picture of the Shelby Justice Center showing what I have staff to honor peace officers, Memorial Day, and Police Week based on an order from Ohio Governor Mike DeVine. I'll thank Mr. Jacobs for noting that in our paper. And in the words of another event such as these provide the opportunity to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities that establish for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. We salute the service of law enforcement officers in the City of Shelby and in communities across the nation. So that was a very nice piece in the Daily Blog here today, and we join those plaudits. The last report from the Health Department was Friday. Our nurse was out today for continuing education, but it was an encouraging report with activity for the last two days, Thursday and Friday of last week, with one new case being reported and two recovered resolved cases. We are currently, as of last Friday, averaging a little less than one new case reported per day within jurisdiction of the City of Shelby. Our department has documented a toll of eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight individuals who have tested positive for COVID-nineteen since the outbreak began in March of two thousand and twenty. Of that cumulative, number eight-hundred-and-thirty individuals have attained recovered resolved status. There have been thirty-six COVID-nineteen deaths documented from within our jurisdiction, nine from general population, and twenty-seven from long-term care facilities. And there were, at that point, two active cases within the City of Shelby. So we're very, very thankful for those numbers going in the right direction. May is a busy month. All kinds of causes are recognized in May, and rightly so. And I do want to bring one to your attention this evening with a proclamation, does it say May as Poppy Month? And I do have one of those Buddy Poppies here that was given to me by Linda Close of the American Legion Auxiliary. I'll read the proclamation. "The annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the American Legion Auxiliary of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since nineteen-twenty-two. And whereas the American Legion Auxiliary Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans at the Ohio Veterans Home in Sandusky, Ohio, and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans and widows and orphans of deceased veterans. And whereas the basic purpose of the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by their auxiliary is eloquently reflected in the desire to, quote, 'honor the dead by helping the living,' end quote. Now therefore I, Stephen L. Shag, Mayor of the City of Shelby, Ohio, hereby urge the citizens of this community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through your donations for Buddy Poppies and the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifice of our honored dead. Furthermore, I urge all patriotic citizens to wear a Buddy Poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedom which we continue to enjoy as American citizens. Poppy Days. In witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Shelby the seventh day of May, two thousand and twenty-one." If my memory serves me correctly, the Auxiliary will be at Cornell's IGA and Sportsman's Den, I believe, Thursday and Friday for the distribution of poppies on a free will donation basis. So gentlemen, that's my report, short and sweet, but any comments or questions for me in regard to my report? Mr. Martin.
Considering the good news out of the Health Department, when do, when do you think that we're going to be, as a council, able to meet with people in attendance and not have to take public comment via emails, et cetera?
Soon. Very likely next meeting. Any further comments or questions? All right, we'll move forward then to Mr. Brian Crum, Director of Finance.
Thank you, sir. I'll keep things short. Councilman Gates did a fabulous job with most of the information going on. As I did state earlier, today is the tax deadline. Obviously, you are allowed to extend your tax return for six months until October fifteenth, but that does not give an extension on the payment. That is still due today. We are going to very closely keep track of interest and penalties, so they will be accruing every, every day that the funds are not, not here. So I encourage anybody who has not filed their taxes to swing by City Hall and chat with the staff and get that taken care of. Other than that, we are, now that we have guidance from the Treasury Department on the ARPA funds, we have a whole slew of other webinars to take part in. Personal logos tomorrow after, and I believe I will send an email link to all of you after the meeting tonight for anyone who would like to sit in on that. And I'll, I'll keep you posted as, as we go through those, and obviously I'll recap those for you as well if you can't make the meetings. But yeah, other than that, we're just, business as usual, busy day at City Hall, and as the, the tax returns sort of will probably slow down here, we'll move into our other things, like the insurance, to kind of make sure we're on our toes and everything. That's sort of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Crum. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Crum in regard to his report? I may say a quick kudos to Sarah Schroep and Lisa Jordan. They were assumed to visit today, handled everyone professionally. We have two of the best tax clerks, I think, in, in this part of the, of the state, so they did a great job. I'm hoping they're relaxing this evening and catching a second breath. All right, we'll move forward then to Mr. Eister as our Law Director, Mr. Gordon Eister. He has attended to an important family matter this evening and formally urged he would not be able to be here. Mr. Joe Geis, Project Coordinator, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. We talked about downtown enhancements in Main Street earlier, but at the next meeting, we're ready to bring the council to approve the plans and advertise for bids, so it's pretty exciting, so we'll have all that ready to go for you. There's also more legislation tonight for that, for the financing of that. The East Main Street sewer was supposed to start today. The contractor had no question he'd have it done in time for the Memorial Day Parade, but he couldn't guarantee the asphalt would be placed, so we didn't want the, everyone marching in the parade to be walking over rough gravel and so forth. So they will start that right after Memorial Day Parade. And the City Hall roof is scheduled to start in July. We met with the contractor and was very impressed, and they will start that in July, so that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Geis. Are there any comments or questions from Mr. Geis in regard to his report? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I move the council recess for ten minutes.
Secretary. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a sec by Mr. Martin to recess for ten minutes. Discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. Reglakman?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
That motion passes, we, we recess at eight oh two.
Did you have sleep last night? Did you have sleep last night?
Yeah, but I've been up since two. I picked up, I must have picked up twelve tons today.
When you crossed that threshold, it bothered you a shout all across the city.
Soon as I got home, Rex needed me to help him, so I missed my council meeting. Was it bad?
Yes. I'll never lie to her, it was bad.
But, and I believe you.
It wasn't so much the sleeping, that didn't bother anybody, it was the snoring.
The snoring? I don't know, I farted as long as I could. Yeah, I was joking, I was sleeping in my truck. When I got off work, I said, just make sure you wake me up and don't lock me on land at all. Because they will. And there's, I mean, well, I'll just take the gate off the hinges, getting out of there.
How are you? So, we have any auxiliary members? Not right now. We do have a guy, we have a, we got a guy that's from Willard that works with us. He's a trooper with the Kentucky State Police. Their pension just got dissolved, they make very little money, and he wants to move back. So we were trying to figure out how we could get into that process. They can't because civil services, you have to have a bad, Ohio Peace Officer certificate. Well, OPADA won't do the equivalency to assess his training until he's in Ohio presence. So we very quickly thought, why don't we just put him on the auxiliary? Move him back here, then pay for him to get his update training. Then he's eligible, we're gonna have openings if he's got experience. So we're, we're working on it. But he just, he can't, nobody wants to do anything.
Yeah. Yeah, it's wrong. About a year ago, I love that my son, he wants to be doing accounting in the FBI. And so about a year ago, I talked to your, because Keely and Logan are second cousins. So I said, go talk to Dave about, you know, what he thinks that would help being a member of a law enforcement agency. And of course Dave was pushing it, and I've been pushing it, and so I think Logan's really starting to think about it. So I said, good, you know, go ahead, talk to the chief.
Absolutely, yeah. We definitely would, we'd do it on if the one of us, just learn to find people.
Yeah.
They just live.
Yeah.
Yeah. Especially in the current...
Sixty-five dollars in season, fifty-five dollars.
If you go someplace and you get a suite, you can't find a suite for under a hundred and thirty.
Anyone else is like, no.
So, you know, what better would be the office, where I'll, where I'll sit. With my eyeliner, so, but yeah, and a long way, it's Airbnb.
That's all bad. Yeah. Yeah, pulling the off, even on the way, or should you spend one night on the way or two?
Two. We, we used to do that one night, and that's just, that's just a killer.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's, you know, seven hundred miles one way, so. Yeah, and, you know, we have luxury time, so.
Yes.
Two nights together.
That's what it's like.
I am, just on the inside.
Fair, thank you to the Planning Commission for this. The current plans in our subdivision regulations were, they date back to the 1980s, so obviously they needed to look at revision, so. And since the, normally anything that we, any changes we make to the subdivision regulations need to go to the Planning Commission, but it's already come from the Planning Commission with their recommendation to adopt them. So we need legislation to adopt these. I'm willing to sponsor, we're going to ask the court to pass the information on to the Law Director for the preparation of legislation.
Very good, thank you. And I will also thank Mr. Geis for guiding the Commission through this process. It was definitely more than one meeting and our Planning Commission, we've got a very good makeup on our Planning Commission and understood the charge thoroughly and did a wonderful job of reviewing and recommending, recommending the changes. So I think it's a good process. All right, any further new business? Thank you, Mr. Gates. Any further new business? All right, I'll move forward then to unfinished business. Future use of the main street fire station, there has been no movement in this regard. Charter, Centennial Timeline? Mr. Gates.
Fair, indeed, there is something to report here. 100 years ago, on Saturday, May 21st, 1921, there was a special election held and the question was shall a charter, shall the commission be elected to frame a charter? That vote passed. The vote was 175 yes votes, 15 no votes at that election. There were 15 commissioners who were elected and it's their job then to draft a charter and present it to the city council. So that was 100 years ago on May 21st, Saturday, special election.
Thank you. I've enjoyed these little highlights and thank Mr. Gates for our local story and for bringing our attention. It is really neat to make those rotations, thank you. All right, the Bryant Park Baseball Field. Mr. Robb.
Well, we heard the Law Director's preliminary opinion that the last meeting, I was kind of hoping to hear something a little bit more substantial by this meeting. I haven't heard anything from him, so I guess we'll, we'll wait until he's here.
We'll keep it on you, gentlemen. Very good, thank you. Any further discussion in that regard? All right, Health Department and the state budget. Mr. Gates.
Fair, we received an email last Friday, I believe it was, that had attached to it a letter that Representative John sent to President Hoffman of the State Senate arguing on our behalf. I've asked the clerk to read that into the record, please.
Dear President Hoffman, through the course of the past 14 months, Ohioans have relied on the services provided by our state's 113 health departments to weather the unprecedented COVID-19 pandemic. These 113 health departments are made up of our state's 88 county health departments and 25 individual city health departments. One of the early versions of House Bill 110 included a provision that would have abolished every health department in a city with a population of less than 50,000. Not only will this language have eliminated 19 local health departments during the global pandemic, it also did not provide any framework for how these health departments should combine funding and resources. A table with the affected health departments is included on the last page of this letter. This provision was later amended to appropriate $6 million to conduct a feasibility study to evaluate the efficiency and effectiveness of merging with county health departments versus remaining on their own with the criteria developed by the state health director and state auditor. This provision begins aligning 74,955 of in-house passed version of the operating budget. This provision is problematic for a number of reasons. First, it should be noted that the number of health departments has significantly reduced over the last 100 years through collaborative local government mergers. In 1918, there were over 1,000 health departments in the state. In the 1980s, there were over 160. In 2005, there were over 130. Today, there are 113. Director Stephanie MacLeod told the Senate Health Committee, for me and the Department of Health, it's not really an issue to have 113. Second, this is a home rule issue raising legal questions about the General Assembly's ability to force charter cities to abolish their health boards. Third, Ohio is the only state in the nation to require local health departments to achieve national accreditation. This process is very thorough, costly and time consuming. Achieving accreditation demonstrates that a local health department is capable of delivering efficient and effective public health services. This amendment fails to recognize the significant investment by local communities to achieve this high standard. Lastly, approximately 75% of local health department fundings come from local governments. State only funds about 18% per capita for these local health departments, or $1,800 per 10,000 in population. This means cities of 10,000 people will receive about $1,800, up to 9,000 for cities of 50,000. The rest of the funding is provided through local levies that are approved by the voters. This again touches on the home rule issue. If the voters in a city want to pay for a local health department, why should the General Assembly deny them their votes? If you do the math, the 19 affected health departments combined serve 371,887 Ohioans. At 18 cents per capita, the state spends approximately $66,939.66 on these health departments. This amount of money is far less than the $6 million authorized for the feasibility study on health departments, many of whom have already achieved national accreditation. Spending $6 million to save $66,939.66 does not make much sense to us. Therefore, we urge you to consider removing this provision completely from the budget. We believe this issue should be addressed in a standalone bill that is thoroughly vetted through the legislative process. Sincerely, Marilyn S. John, State Representative, District 2.
Thank you. Mr. Gates.
Well, it's, one wonders where such ideas come from, that to invest, invest, excuse me, it's not invest, to squander $6 million in order to save, what, $67,000? You know, that argument is strong enough to scuttle this idea and one doesn't have to get into things, the cerebral is home rule and local control, but I certainly appreciate the efforts that Marilyn John, our state representative, former mayor, you know, she's, she has, I'm sure, some pride in our local health department as all of us do, so. But her point is that this should, if this is such an important issue, it can stand alone in a standalone bill, but as we all know, the annual budget becomes the Christmas tree upon which any number of ornaments are hung. So, but I'm wondering, Mayor, if we had thought we might hear about our, from DC, about our accreditation, so, excuse me, but yes, our consultant wrote today and she has not heard anything as yet. She said, as soon as she does, we will, as soon as I do, you will. Kind of in the catch, was no news, good news, you know, question mark. But, you know, we are waiting to hear on that accreditation word. She thought even Friday, she said, no, it might go to Monday or Tuesday, so we'll let you know when we know. And if I may add, Senator Romanchuk is working very diligently on behalf of health departments of our size on the Senate side. So very, very glad that he is, he is our representative and hearing all sides, but he's working very hard for local departments of our size. Very good.
All right, any further discussion on that topic? All right, any other unfinished business? Hearing up, let's move forward to legislation.
Orders, ordinance number 14, 2021, authorizing the Director of Finance to levy assessments for the improvement of a portion of West Main Street for the sanitary sewer and its apprehensions. Move for first reading.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for the first reading of ordinance number 14, 2021. Discussion. Mr. Gates.
Well, we aren't sure that your administration has done all the math, all the work has been done and that's what brings us to this piece of legislation. You see, the costs have been invited among the property owners. It was to be assessed by benefits conferred, property gets a sewer tap, so everyone shares shares equally in this, in this case.
Mr. Robb.
Actually, all the work hasn't been done. I was contacted by one of the residents out there, still waiting to have grading and grass planted where the sewer line was excavated. Also, as you well know, in the current state in the past, I don't think the city has done enough for these people. I think these assessments are entirely too high and I'm not in favor of forcing somebody to pay $1,500 plus for the next 10 years on their taxes. I would be voting against this piece of legislation.
Mr. Gates.
Excuse me, Mayor, did I miss a piece of legislation that Councilman Robb on forward to put more monies into this?
No, I believe so.
Thank you.
May I address the, Mr. Geis, we have had a couple of calls in regard to the final grading and so forth. There's an explanation why the contractor was waiting, right?
The problem is we've got three different contractors. We have the contractor put the main in, we have the contractors put the ladders in, and then we have the AEP contractor out there. There's been quite a bit of different things and I've talked with probably the same person that Councilmember Robb is. Well, I'm working that out through the contractors, but I'm waiting for them to get here next week and we'll get all that worked out. So that's all warranty issue at this point, so we'll get that taken care of for them. But there are some residents who still have very large skids sitting in their front yards from the electric, so that's hardly, I think that's not on ours, but we'll make sure it 's taken care of.
Right. Yeah, but the settling issues and so forth, that we want to make sure that before we go to the final, final grading, I think we got that, so. It has not fallen dead here. Any further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Gates.
Yeah.
Mr. Martin.
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Ordinance number 14, 2021 passes as first reading.
Resolution number 28, 2021, authorizing the mayor as Director of Public Service to enter into an amended agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Transportation, OPAD, relating to a local public agency, LPA, federal local let program funding in the amount not to exceed $1,099,492.04, or 90% of the eligible costs relating to the Downtown Enhancement Project, RIC-PID-111240, and declaring emergency.
Will the resolution be taken, passed?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Gates for the passage of Resolution number 28, 2021. Discussion. Mr. Gates.
This is the, the funding that Ms. Griven sent in, I guess it wasn't really kind of an application, it was all the municipalities send in something that you want funded and lo and behold, we got it. So now the agreement comes, the state, they're using the Ohio Department of Natural Resources to fill all this money through, to administer the grants and so forth. So that agreement is attached and we're ready to go.
Thank you. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, the state's capital budget is somewhat like a Christmas tree on which communities hang many, many ornaments. I like this Christmas tree, the previous one I don't carry.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Martin.
The Christmas tree given from the Christmas tree taken.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates.
Yeah.
Mr. Martin.
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Resolution number 29, 2021, passes.
Miscellaneous business, any miscellaneous business to be brought before council?
Mr. Martin.
Mayor, I will be out of town on the next council.